All right. All right. Good evening, everyone. The time is now 6:30 PM, Monday, August 18th, and I would like to call the Cunningham Township Board Meeting to order. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Hee Wu, here. Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Hersi. Trustee Colacetti.
Here.
Trustee Bishop.
Here.
Trustee Wilkin.
Here.
Trustee Quisenberry.
Here.
Chair Williams.
Here.
Supervisor Chenoweth.
Present.
Assessor Owana.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. To reflect, we have quorum. And the next item is the approval of the minutes from the meeting held May 27, 2025. Are there any corrections to those minutes? All right. Seeing none, the minutes will stand approved.
We need a motion.
Oh, make a motion for the minutes to stand approved. I'm sorry. So we need a motion for that.
I'm of approval.
All right.
Second.
Motion made by Mary Alice, seconded by Councilmember Chandra. Any discussion? All right. Board trustee, Chandra. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Wu.
Yes.
Trustee Evans.
Yes.
Trustee Colacetti.
Yes.
Trustee Bishop.
Yes.
Trustee Wilkin.
Yes.
Trustee Quisenberry.
Yes.
All right. Minutes stand approved. Thank you. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda from any board members?
Just a point of process. If we could remove number eight, letter G, about the CWG funds, because it's not, it's not ready yet. We're still waiting for a final from the city, so we'll just bring that back to you next month.
Said number eight. What was that?
Letter G, the very last thing on the agenda. Thank you.
All right. With those changes, do I need to have a motion? All right, we can move on with those changes added. Next, we will move to public participation. If there are any members of the public wishing to speak, you may come to the microphone. You have five minutes to speak. All right, seeing none, we will move on. All right. We'll now hear from the committee to verify the bills for Town Fund and General Assistance Fund.
Very good evening. I've lost my voice, so I will be making along the best I can this evening. This last month in the Town Fund, we had $54,999.26 in expenditures. In the General Assistance Fund, we had $228,021.90. Our total expenditures for the month was $282,121.16. And I just made a note that we had a portal access issue, and so IMR and FSA aren't included in these items. So we're going to, if you, I would recommend, you know, basically approving these now, and then we will bring an updated list of bills, and you can approve the revised list in July as well as August. I think it's also totally possible for you to defer on the bills, so you can choose which one you would like to take.
All right, what with, go ahead. I'm so sorry. Give me the, the.
Trustee.
Trustee, I am so sorry. Trustee Wu.
I had two questions. The first one is, is that, and I apologize if I've asked this before, but there's a lot of references to something SASS. I was wondering if you could tell me what that acronym stands for?
It's somewhat of an outdated term for Bridge to Home Family Program. So SAS refers to Shelter and Services. We don't really consider ourselves shelter. We consider ourselves emergency housing, so we've been transitioning away from that, but you may see that used by some staff members.
Okay, and then my second question is, it looks like there's two checks that were cut to Beckett Property Trust on the same day for the exact same amount, which is on page 12 of the PDF and page nine of the bills?
Yes, that's correct. So half of the Beckett lease goes to the General Assistance Fund and half to the Town Fund. We have both offices basically functioning out of that location, so we split it 50/50.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. And I guess my only request would be to put off approving the bills until we have them more clear, not clear, rather up to date.
All right. So with that in mind, do I need to make a motion to put off the approval of the bills, and then we just go with approving the Town Fund?
So, yeah, at this time, we could just make a motion to defer Committee to Verify Bills as a whole to the next meeting of the Township Board.
Okay.
Because this is for the July bills predominantly, correct? Yeah, okay.
All right. So I will make a motion to defer the approval.
It has to be a trustee. I'll make that motion for you.
I'll second.
All right. Motion made by trustee Quisenberry, seconded by trustee Wu. Any discussion? All right, clerk, do we need to call roll?
Sure. Trustee Wu.
Thank you.
Yes.
Trustee Evans.
Yes.
Trustee Colacetti.
Yes.
Trustee Bishop.
Yes.
Trustee Wilkin.
Yes.
Trustee Quisenberry.
Yes.
All right, that has been deferred. Thank you all for your patience as well. We will now move to, we will now hear reports of officers. Are there any officer reports at this time?
I will be brief. I just wanted to give an update on a pop-up shelter, which we had talked about at the last meeting. We were able to provide an extended shelter because the heat index kept moving on us, and so we were able to move residents, have them in for a period of time, and then anyone, until the 31st, and then anyone who had, we do provide case management as we can during the pop-up shelter, thanks to the HHI grant, and so we were able to route four of the residents in that short timeframe, which was really about a week and a half, to independent housing and have lease offers for them. And so we kept them in our shelter, excuse me, our hotel shelter, until we were able to house them permanently. Then I wanted to mention, there were a total of about 80 households that we've helped between the different displaced residents. It's quite, quite high number for us in this timeframe. We only have about two residents left in hotels. Everyone who we kept in hotels after the city, the two-week stay, they stayed in hotels because they had a clear exit strategy with the lease offer. Sometimes it just takes a while for the landlord to prepare that location, and we don't like to destabilize folks. The other things I would just point out is rental assistance is always at a very high this time of year. So we had 70 applications, up from 60. I just want to say, you know, pre-pandemic, we were at 10 to 12, so I don't think we're ever going back to that timeframe. So the CWG funds will be very helpful for that. And then utility assistance, we had, you know, very, we've had a very high number throughout the summer because of the heat. With a street outreach, we continue to help people with reunification and to connect to services outside of Champaign County as our shelter remains full. And we are at 12, we received 12 referrals for families experiencing homelessness. We do receive those referrals directly during the summer, and we have 11 currently on our waitlist for families. The only other thing I wanted to mention, which we met about this morning, is that the Housing Authority has a request for letters of intent. They've set aside in their Move to Work program a million dollars to support homeless services. It all has to be spent by the end of the year, and there's no guarantee of a renewal, and it cannot be spent on staffing. So we had a good conversation today at United Way about how to thread that needle. This is oftentimes what happens with homeless services, and it's very much appreciated, but oftentimes it's a lot of money in a very short timeframe with very specific constraints. That said, I think they're looking to do this every year. It just takes a while for HUD to approve. They had to wait on their Move to Work plan to be approved, and there's been delays at the federal level, for reasons you may understand. So I think everyone's doing the best that they can. But we will be applying for some additional rapid rehousing dollars and rentalist, what we're calling rental assistance plus. What that would mean is basically support for literally homeless individuals and families to be able to move into independent housing. And we had really good conversation, and a lot of the community organizations are really looking to Cunningham Township because it's on a reimbursement basis, and many of them don't have the cash flow or the cash on hand. So we're trying to play the role the best we can to support that. And certainly, we'll be talking today about the HHI grant and that grant. Without that grant, I don't know how we would have the staffing support to be able to move on an opportunity like this, so. You know, so that's where we're at, and be happy to answer any questions that folks have.
Trustee Grace.
How sustainable is this money? You're going to do rental assistance with it, and it's only, the funding is only for one year?
It's, it will be about three months. We'll have three months to spend the funding. I think there'll be multiple organizations. I would get, they were anticipating funding between three and five organizations for it. It's, that way, it can, it's not sustainable. What it is, is one way to think about it, and I've kind of been, in air quotes, saying, calling this the clear, the shelters money, meaning if there's somebody in any shelter with sufficient income to maintain that, they need to move to a different, their independent space. And that will free up space. It's you at home, at Strides, at Cunningham Township. Our sponsor-based vouchers closed in March, and we anticipated having 10, and we were able to use two. We usually use about one per month, so we were on track. But because there were so many folks circulating, looking for places to stay, and they were, just the way they're managing their HUD money, they, we, they had too many people out with vouchers. They weren't able to release, HUD was not going to release additional vouchers to our Housing Authority to release to us. So what they're doing instead is, you know, this, this funding. So I think it'll be really essential because we will use it to house families who we would otherwise house with sponsor-based vouchers, and the one, and we'll help move people out of shelter with income, and hopefully they can maintain, and if they have trouble, there is rental assistance available through our three E organization consortium, so.
All right, trustee Grace.
Thanks for all the updates and all the work happening at the township, especially just highlighting the displacement issue. Really appreciate how that's been handled and being proactive with people with such terrible situations that they're facing. I know it's been really hard for your office and staff as well, and appreciate that. And I guess not so much a question, but just invitation that, I think you had mentioned some recommended improvements as far as the city side for prevention and additional kind of enhanced transition services, and just wanted to throw out there that still happy to hear or help with any recommended improvements and see what we can do on the city kind of systemically for instances like this.
Yeah, I feel the system in Urbana has been easier and better than Champaign. I know that Champaign is looking at Urbana as a model right now, because I think they've learned a lot from the Champaign Park Apartments. I am meeting with the City of Champaign tomorrow and hoping to open up that door, and we've invited Mayor Williams to join us, just to start building that relationship. Ideally, we kind of have similar MOUs between homeless service providers and the cities, and I think there is an interest on all sides to make that happen.
All right, trustee Chandra.
Danielle, this is not on topic, but kind of on topic, but the community gardens that, do they run during the summer? Who runs them during the summer when they're like on school property and stuff like that?
Yeah, so the community gardens, most of the gardens are run by individuals who qualify for SNAP or immigrant families. So about, I want to say 50 or so of the gardens run that way, and then about 20 of them are affiliate gardens, and every garden has caretakers, volunteer caretakers. So I know that the school gardens have volunteers who work through, through the summer, even when the kids aren't in school. And actually, some of those school gardens have just been, you know, they're just great. They've been really successful. I wanted to just share, since you asked, I was, walk, I oftentimes walk through the Township Garden because it makes me really happy, and I was walking through our common eat garden, and there was a person, a young person who was there who was picking the food, and she shared with me, she's probably 18, 19 years old, and she said, there's no way I would have the money to buy vegetables, like me and my housemate come here all the time, and we picked the kale, and we really appreciate it. So I just wanted to share that with the town board.
That's great to hear. That's what I kind of wanted to know, like, you know, are they, are the gardens being used in the summertime, or, you know, when, when staff isn't in the building, in the school building, so.
Yeah, I mean, we only have a few school gardens, but I will say, I mean, we've had bumper crops. It's been hot, so you have to make sure you irrigate, but we also have a sun grant to add irrigation, so we've been working on that piece. But we are seeing, I mean, tomatoes love the heat, and we were at the back-to-school event the other day, and we just had crates and crates of vegetables, and all of the vegetables we had left, including the okra, which is oftentimes hard to get rid of, but there were people who wanted the okra, so we got rid of everything. Mm-hmm.
Any additional questions? All right, thank you for the update. We will move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before? All right, seeing none, we will move on to new business. So under new business, we have several items, including ordinances and resolutions. I guess I have a question. Am I able to consider all of the items together?
I would advise that we take them one at a time.
Individual?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Point of process.
Yes.
With the first two ordinances, just a reminder, each year, what you do is you actually put those budgets on file, and then we have to wait 30 days, the clerk will notice in the paper, and then the actual final votes will be, are scheduled right now for September 22nd. If for some reason we're not able to do it, we have another meeting on the 29th. It does have to be done by the end of September. So the request for today is simply for us to put these on file, so you have a full 30 days to look at them, and, and the public has a full 30 days to look at them as well. And I'll just mention, the first is an amendment, amended budget for this last fiscal year that's based on actuals, very reliable numbers, and then the second is the prospective fiscal year budget, and there, we do anticipate some changes with that because there's a few, like I said, with the Housing Authority, we did not put that grant in our budget, and we think at this point that we should, but we delivered, we finished this last week, so, though we'll be making a few changes, and we can get you a revised budget. And you do have copies of the budget in front of you tonight.
All right, so, and clerk, please correct me if, if wrong. So the, the first will be a motion to approve putting the, putting ordinance number T-2025-08-001 on file for approval within 30 days? Is that how we move with that?
Yeah, so we would, we would entertain a motion to place that ordinance on file for 30 days, and we would still do the second, the vote, just like normal. It's just instead of a motion to approve, it's a motion to place on file.
Look at that, look at me learning. All right. All right, so I will make a motion to, oh, I am so sorry. All right, go ahead. I'm trying to just get the wording right. Go for it, girl.
I would move to put on file ordinance number T-025-08-001, an ordinance approving the annual budget and appropriation ordinance fiscal year 2024 to 2025 as amended, I think, not as, I just noticed amended, just a little typo there. Thank you.
Second.
All right, motion made by Grace, seconded by Jaya. Any discussion? Mary Alice.
So I just wanted to make a request. Thank you very much. The assessor gave us some additional documents today, and what I liked about this was not only kind of the description, but also the fact that we had the budget fiscal year 2024 included in that. So Danielle, it would be really helpful if we also had the 2024 on this one as well.
You, do you mean 2025?
2025, thank you.
Okay. And do you, would you, I anticipated this question, but I'm really not sure, because you will see a big difference between what was budgeted and what the actual was. It seems like it would make more sense to put actuals next to proposed. Is that what you're looking for, rather than what was budgeted? Because we're rebudgeting essentially. You want, you want the rebudget, the amended budget?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that, and the updated budget that, that I can send you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So now we will move on to ordinance, uh, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Wu.
Yes.
Trustee Evans.
Yes.
Trustee Colacetti.
Yes.
Trustee Bishop.
Yes.
Trustee Wilkin.
Yes.
Trustee Quisenberry.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that passes. All right, so now we will move on to ordinance number T-2025-08-002. James?
I'd like to move that we put ordinance number T-2025-08-002, an ordinance approving the annual budget and appropriation ordinance fiscal year 2025 through 2026 on file for, as required.
Second.
Motion by James, seconded by Chandra. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Wu.
Yes.
Trustee Evans.
Yes.
Trustee Colacetti.
Yes.
Trustee Bishop.
Yes.
Trustee Wilkin.
Yes.
Trustee Quisenberry.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. All right, we will move on to resolu, resolution number T-2025-08-011R, a resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an agreement with the State of Illinois for the IDHS Emergency Transitional Housing ETH Grant for Homeless Services FY26.
I'll just speak briefly to this. This is our third year of our ETH grant. It is our largest grant. At about $530,000 a year, we will be renewing next year, and it supports Bridge to Home Services. It is a, been a flat grant for three years.
Thank you. Chandra.
I move resolution number T-2025-08-011R, a resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an agreement with the State of Illinois for the IDHS Emergency Transitional Housing ETH Grant for Homeless Services FY26.
Second.
Motion made by Chandra, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, close the roll.
Trustee Wu.
Yes.
Trustee Evans.
Yes.
Trustee Colacetti.
Yes.
Trustee Bishop.
Yes.
Trustee Wilkin.
Yes.
Trustee Quisenberry.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next, resolution number T-2025-08-012R, a resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an agreement with the State of Illinois, State of Illinois for the Home Illinois RRH Grant for Homeless Services FY26.
Yeah, so this is a renewal. It's also, we weren't, we were not funded in the first year. We were funded in the second, and this would be the third year, and then we'll be in the renewal process. We were offered an additional about $100,000 in this grant due to the performance of our program, so we are at about $250,000. So we are at about 256 in home RH funds.
Thank you. Mary Ellis?
Does that mean that you were at 256 for this year or for last year? I'm sorry, for this year or for the upcoming year?
We were at 256, we were at about 150 last year and we're at 256 this year. This coming year, the year that we're entering. So we have additional dollars to do rapid rehousing with.
All right, I'm not sure if I'm misreading. I thought this said 245 in this document.
Oh, sorry, it's 245, 261. I have like back of the napkin numbers in my brain that I operate with. At some point, it was 265 or two, it was 256. So, no, it's 245, 261 as written in the agreement.
All right, thank you.
Grace?
Would move for approval, resolution number T-2025-08-012R, resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an agreement with the state of Illinois for the Home Illinois RRH Grant for Homeless Services FY26.
A second.
Motion made by Grace, seconded by Jaya. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you call the roll?
Trustee Wu?
Yes.
Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Colacetti?
Yes.
Trustee Bishop?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkin?
Yes.
Trustee Quizenberry?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have resolution number T-2025-08-013R, a resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an agreement with the state of Illinois for the Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, for homeless services FY26.
This is our Emergency Solutions Grant. It is hard money that passes through the state. My understanding is that it's secure for this year because it already had passed through. We are seeing an increase from about 74K. I can give you the exact, was 73, 363, up to 125, 125,6898. About 81,000 is for street outreach and 93, excuse me, 39,000 is for rapid rehousing and then we do have an indirect cost piece that's included as well. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions? All right. Jaya?
First, I just want to say I appreciate all the increases. I know it's a lot of work and I think it's a testament to the work that's happening in the township office. So thank you and thank you to your team offices right now.
I'll be passing that along because they work really, really hard.
They do. I think it's important to recognize. And I'm happy to recommend resolution number T-2025-08-013R, a resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an agreement with the state of Illinois for the Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, for homeless, homeless services FY26 for approval.
Second.
Motion made by Jaya, seconded by Mary Ellis. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you call the roll?
Trustee Wu?
Yes.
Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Colacetti?
Yes.
Trustee Bishop?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkin?
Yes.
Trustee Quizenberry?
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes. All right, last, we have resolution number, number T-2025-08-014R, resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an agreement with City of Urbana for Housing and Homeless Innovation, HHI, Grant for a Cares Bridge to Home Services FY26 through FY27.
So this is our Housing and Homeless Innovation Grant from the City of Urbana. It does come from the general fund. We appreciate the City of Urbana's support. And essentially, this allows us to fund our cares team. It is an eighteen-month grant. We'll be spending about 120,000 in this fiscal year, as you'll see in the budget, and about half that in the, excuse me, 80,000 in the, the second year of the grant.
Thank you, Danielle. Are there any que- Chandra?
I move resolution number T-2025-08-014R, a resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an agreement with the City of Urbana for Housing and Homeless Innovation, HHI, Grant for Cares Bridge to Home Services for FY26 through FY27.
Second.
All right, motion made by Chandra, seconded by Grace. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Wu?
Yes.
Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Colacetti?
Yes.
Trustee Bishop?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkin?
Yes.
Trustee Quizenberry?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That motion passes. All right, seeing as though there's no further business amongst this body, I, this meeting is adjourned. We'll take a quick five-minute break and come back and return to the committee of the whole. Thanks.
Okay, mic working? Hopefully, hopefully it's audible back there. Okay, all right. Welcome out of call to order this meeting of the City of Urbana Committee of the Whole. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Hersi? Councilmember Colacetti?
Here.
Councilmember Bishop?
Here.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Here.
Councilmember Quizenberry?
Here.
Mayor Williams? Thank you.
Thank you. And then first item of business is approval of previous minutes from 7/21/25. Could I have a motion?
I move approval of the committee of the whole minutes from July 21st.
Second.
You move to approve by Chandra, seconded by Jaya. Any discussion or changes? Okay, and this, I can do a voice vote, right? Okay, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Those minutes are approved. Next is additions, additions to the agenda. Are there any additions or changes tonight? Okay, seeing none. Our next item is presentations and public input. I think we can take the presentation first if our presenters would like to come up to the table. We have a presentation from OSF Healthcare Heart of Mary Medical Center update. I'll let you introduce yourselves, but while you're getting settled on the agenda, we have from JT Barnhart, President, and Christopher Manson, Vice President of Government Relations. When you're settled in and get started, you have ten minutes for the presentation, as you can see on the timer there. And if you would, please push the button so the green light's on your microphones and you can scoot them closer so you can speak close and make sure they can hear you at home. And then when you're ready, if you want to reintroduce if there's anything I missed and you have ten minutes.
Sure, thank you, thank you very much for having us. I'm JT Barnhart. I'm the president with OSF Healthcare and oversee our hospitals in Urbana and Danville.
Good evening, I'm Chris Manson, Vice President of Government Relations for OSF Healthcare.
Again, thank you for having us. Thought that it would be very helpful for, for me to come and, and Chris to come and kind of address some of the changes, what, what we're calling as, as our health system, a strategic transformation between Urbana and Danville. And so I wanted to, I think, as, as we're kind of moving toward the two hospitals becoming one hospital under one tax ID with, with two campuses, with Urbana being a campus and, and Danville being a campus, and kind of talk a little bit about some of the reasoning without, without being too long, being cognizant of your time tonight. And so OSF purchased the two hospitals in, in both communities in 2018. The focus of the hospital in Urbana initially was around expanding services, some specialty areas, growing primary care, building a, a good, strong primary care network, having a lot of access points for the community. We continued to, to operate a 26-bed behavioral health unit that was existing when, when we purchased the facility. Still have that unit today. Had some successes around some of our specialty recruitment, being able to add some providers around services like cardiology and, and GI, general surgery, orthopedics. Unfortunately, over the years, we, we, we did struggle to build a strong primary care base and, and that's family medicine, internal medicine, some, some struggles in recruitment and, and just kind of building up a panel. And, and so unfortunately, right, right now, as of this year, we only have about 5,600 patients in our primary care panel. This, this makes up only about two and a half percent of, of the county's total population. And so while we've had success in, in building some of those or recruiting some of those specialists to, to the community to help kind of bolster some of the services, without a, a, a strong network of what else we refer to as referral sources from, from the primary care side, it has been a struggle for the hospital here and, and to, to build on some of those specialty services. And, and what we've seen over the years because of that, as a result of that, is a, is a continuous decrease in our overall market share. And so coming into this year and, and right now, through, through, through this month in our, in our fiscal year, we only have about an eight and a half percent overall market share for the hospital here in town, in Urbana. And so I'll segue a little and then, and then I'll come back. But on the other side of, of the equation, we have the only hospital serving Vermillion County in Danville, Sacred Heart Medical Center. Over the years, a lot of specialty providers have, have retired out of the market, left the community. Same thing from a primary care standpoint. It is a, a more challenging environment to recruit physicians to, to recruit providers to. So we've seen continuous struggles there. But there is a, a huge need in that community for all things healthcare, primary care. Our ERC is about 40,000 patients a year. We have historically transferred almost 200 patients a month out of that hospital. And so people who live in Vermillion County are being transferred to either Champaign, Bloomington, Peoria, Indianapolis, Chicago, various places for specialty services. And so as, as we looked at a, as a health system in the two communities and, and where our resources, our providers, our specialty services made the most sense to go, we came up with this, this plan to, to combine the two hospitals into one, shift the majority of our specialty services to Danville. So as I mentioned, some of the general surgery, orthopedics, GI, where we have just huge needs, a, a community that is, our patient population at the, at the hospital in Danville is over 60% Medicaid. So huge community need and it's, and it's a, a demographic of patient that we, that we want to make sure. There are a lot of transportation issues. So I talked a little bit about having to transfer 200 patients a month and that, that becomes a challenge for those patients and their families. So we felt that, that the need for the specialty services that we had here made more sense in, in Danville, at, at that hospital, Sacred Heart, to, to help serve that, that patient population. Then we evaluate, we've been evaluating for a while. What is the, what is the, 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 kind of the need here in this, in this community for OSF? What can we cater toward that, that there's just not enough service around? Obviously, we don't want to duplicate services with only an eight and a half percent market share. Clearly, the community is saying that we don't need to duplicate certain specialty services. But the one glaring service that has stood out to us is behavioral health. And so our plan on this, on this campus, I'll just kind of give you what, what will be here after we go through the CON process and come, come the first of the year, if all is approved with that, is we will continue to have a, a 26-bed, what is right now a 26-bed adult behavioral health unit. We will end up making that a 13-bed private unit. They're, they're all semi-private rooms now. And so we'll keep that unit as a full adult unit. We just received $13 million from OSF to expand behavioral health services within the hospital. And so we're going to take one of the, the old medical floors, medical acute floors, and we've started the renovation process to turn it into a 13-bed private unit for, for what we see as young adult. So that are, are people who live in this community, 18 to 26 age. A huge preponderance of our behavioral health patients on the adult floor are in that age demographic. So we'll have programs, it'll all be private, service really geared towards the, the acute mental illness challenges we see in the younger population. And then another medical floor. And then another medical floor, uh, will be renovated into a thirteen-bed, also private, um, behavioral, acute behavioral health unit for our older, our senior, uh, population, what we call a geriatric psych unit. A lot of focus around programs catering towards the, the needs of the, uh, older population here in town that are experiencing behavioral health issues. We will keep the emergency room the way that it is today, so, uh, it's, uh, it's, it's deemed a basic service, emergency room. We did, um, get about five hundred thousand dollars to, to make some renovations in the emergency room to make more, uh, space for behavioral health. We think we're going to see more behavioral health patients through the ER as a result of all this. So we'll have additional behavioral health rooms in conjunction to the rest of the ER where we'll see medical patients. And then we are going to have a twenty-five-bed medical unit on, on, on one of the floors, so it'll be where we have acute patients now that'll cater towards patients with behavioral health diagnoses, uh, that need medical clearance before they can move to an acute behavioral bed. We'll have medical detox on that floor, um, basically a stabilization of people who present uh, with needing ultimately an acute behavioral health bed, but have medical issues that we need to address first before they get to that. And then we'll keep all of the ancillary services that will need to run all those programs. So housekeeping, food services, uh, imaging, lab, um, all of the components of that. We, we will have, um, ultimately, when, when all of the conversion is done, we'll have, uh, still about two hundred and fifty, uh, staff members that will work in, in the Urbana Hospital. We, we made offers to about eighty-eight percent of our current staff members to either stay and, and work in the behavioral health component of this facility or work in Danville or work in Bloomington, our two sister hospitals on, on either side of us. Um, and so, um, we've, we've got about a sixty percent conversion rate of those we've made offers to that are staying on with the system. Um, and also, you know, meeting fairly regularly with, with Carl Health System in town. They will have needs for some expansion on some services and are able to hire, uh, some of the staff as well. So, um, I'll now turn it over to Chris if you want to elaborate anymore.
Now, I just, in the last forty, forty-five seconds, I'll just say, one of the things that we've been looking at is how to make things sustainable, right? Um, we know we're in a very interesting environment when it comes to reimbursement on Medicaid and Medicare. We saw what came out with the, uh, one big beautiful bill. Um, today, I think the Congressional Budget Office mentioned that it might be looking at a need for five hundred billion in cuts in Medicare. Healthcare is, is, is a challenge, and when your payer mix is seventy percent Medicaid, Medicare, approximately, there are challenges. This allows us to go ahead and really make things sustainable for both Urbana and Danville. Danville is a safety net hospital. If I can just finish my point, if that's okay?
Uh, well, we can make a motion if you need additional time.
Okay.
Is there a motion for, is it just a few minutes?
Just a minute. I mean, like thirty seconds.
I'll make a motion for two minutes.
Two minutes, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. I won't abuse it. Um, now, Danville's our safety net hospital. The payer mix traditionally, when it comes to, uh, behavioral health is about, our experience has been about sixty percent Medicaid. So what'll end up happening is by combining the two campuses into one, under one hospital license, you'll actually strengthen the safety net status in Danville, which re- uh, results in higher reimbursement for, for the, um, for the patients, for that reimbursement. And then that'll also then, because Urbana will be a campus of that Danville hospital, we receive additional Medicaid reimbursement, which will again continue to contribute to the sustainability of this campus as well. So we see it really as a win-win, uh, for both communities and gives us an opportunity. Uh, it's really planned long-term to provide healthcare in, in both, uh, counties. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there some questions? Yes, James?
Hey, yeah, thank, thank you for the presentation. And I, I would say, uh, I appreciate the focus on behavioral health because the, the need there is, is pretty high. Um, to, to go into a little more detail, um, you said the, the young patients that you're going to have a focused area for are age eighteen to twenty?
Eighteen to twenty-six, kind of, kind of that, uh, young adult college age.
Um, what about, will you be serving anybody under the age of eighteen in this situation?
As of, as of right now, we won't have an adolescent unit. No, we, we, we will have some, uh, potentially some adolescent beds within our system in Peoria, but this campus won't have adolescent beds, no.
Okay, and then you mentioned that, um, the payer mix is seventy percent Medicare, Medicaid. Do you have a, a breakdown on how much of the seventy percent is Medicaid and how much is Medicare?
Yeah, for, for behavioral health specifically, you mean?
You were talking more generally, I think, with that seventy percent.
Just generally, overall, and when you look at a, a hospital payer mix from a health system perspective, we're generally about, it's, it's, it can be anywhere from sixty-five to seventy-five percent Medicare, Medicaid. It'll vary. In fact, I think Danville actually, uh, government pay is actually ninety-five percent government pay when you factor in the VA. So really, it'll depend. I don't know if you've got the breakdown here.
This, this market, so Heart of Mary is about forty percent Medicaid out of that, to, to do the math, and then about fifty-five percent, fifty-eight percent in Danville's Medicaid.
Okay, thank you. So predominantly Medicaid in both of those spaces and a smaller amount Medicare?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe you go around the circle, I guess that's okay. Uh, Mary Alice, you can go.
Uh, thank you for coming and, and giving us a little more details. Um, my question is, if we're keeping the ER open, where do people go once they're released and need follow-up care?
Yeah. We're, um, working on some, we've kind of got a, a PI project around the transportation efforts. And, and so if, if patients want to stay within the OSF system, if they, if they want to follow up with an OSF provider post, post-discharge, we're working on some, uh, services that'll allow for that because our, our providers will be in either Bloomington or Danville that are, that are shifting out of this market. Um, and so we're also collaborating with, uh, local, Christie Clinic and Carl providers on, on what their access is potentially. Um, and so there's, there's some strategies kind of happening in, in both ways, you know, whether it's staying with an OSF provider. For patients that walk into the ER here that need higher level of care, we've secured, um, uh, more, more air flight with, with our system, but we also have, we will have twenty-four-seven, uh, ambulance on the campus. That's, that's a change from how it's been in the past. We want to make sure that any patient that comes in the ER that needs higher level service, we, we get them to the right, uh, facility as quick as possible. And so we'll have ambulance service that will either do interfacility to our hospital in Bloomington, if it's something cardiac, neuro-related. Uh, hospital in Danville, if it's, uh, something that the patient wants to stay in the system for general GI orthopedics or Carl for anything complex that can't leave, that can't travel that far. So sort of, sort of doing it from a multi-pronged, uh, effort.
So I know that, uh, emergency rooms have access to X-rays and CAT scans and MRIs, et cetera. Will you still maintain those services?
We, we will, we will keep the majority of the modalities that we need for ER patients, yes, because our plan is to, to continue to run the ER the way it is today. The, the difference is we won't have, um, specialty providers on this campus outside of behavioral health to do consults on patients. So if we admit a patient that needs a general surgeon, we wouldn't be able to handle that here on this campus with the focus going primarily to, uh, the behavioral health components.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would just add also that, you know, OSF, one of the things that, um, OSF is, is pretty proud of is our ability to, um, in the area of innovation. And we've deployed a lot of tele-tools or digital tools. So, um, you know, someone that walks into our, to our, one of our facilities has access to a lot of, um, specialists uh, via digital means or tele-means. So as, as someone presents themselves at the ED, there's other resources available to go ahead and assess the individual to determine, you know, if the care is warranted with their existing facility or if they should be packaged up and, and, you know, put on an ambulance to, for higher level of care. So those, that, that, those tools will be, continue to be available.
Thank you. Mayor Williams?
To what, um, Councilmember Mary Alice was saying, and you may have already answered it. Um, but what services have already stopped, you know, completely? Um, and if they're not, and if they hadn't stopped already, what's the timeline of, you know, things stopping outside of just the behavioral health piece?
Yeah, we, we've, uh, we've, we've done a pretty robust expansion at, um, OSF St. Joe's in Bloomington around, around cardiac services. And so we made the decision after starting to lose some of the resources that we have and employees and a couple of providers here to, to shift our open hearts, our cardiothoracic and our, um, cath lab, STEMI, STEMI, uh, you know, uh, services, interventional and diagnostic cath services to, to, uh, St. Joe's in Bloomington. That occurred about a week ago. We will, there's sort of a, a, a timeline of when certain services will start to move to either Danville or Bloomington with the, the operating room here in town running till the end of this month, August, and, and our ICU following suit. A lot of that is, is, you know, we, um, when we first made the announcements, the plans were to try to keep these services as long as we could until CON and January first came. But, uh, some challenges around keeping staff with all of the changes and uncertainty around certain services. And so we've started to see some of those, uh, high-level specialties, um, shift. I think from a patient safety, quality standpoint, that makes sense. We, we've got a great hospital in Bloomington from a cardiac standpoint, and we've got more providers there, and it's, it's a little bit more robust, so it made sense for us to shift that a little sooner.
And then I would just add, you know, like, right now, currently, um, our census at the hospital, so the number of patients and inpatient beds right now, I believe we're under thirty-five, uh, patients today. When this is all done, as you heard JT spell out, we'll be at sixty-five beds. So when everything's said, you know, when we start, hopefully after January one, we, or, you know, we start to really get going on to this or start wrapping this up and putting this in motion, um, based on our plans, you'll have a sixty-bed, sixty-five-bed facility here, in which we think will be, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll see a lot of business when it comes to, uh, behavioral health.
Yeah, that's, that's, sorry, I just, forty-bed license for behavioral health because all of tho- all of those beds will be private and then twenty-five-bed medical unit is what he's referring to that makes up the sixty-five.
And Chandra was in the lineup, and we'll come back to you.
Um, you mentioned that you would be keeping about two hundred and fifty staff members, um, with the sixty-five-bed operation. And that was eighty-eight percent of the staff that you had before, was that correct?
Well, actually, I think I'll let JT answer in detail, but I think actually the, 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 the story is actually a lot better than what we had even anticipated. I'll let you, uh, follow up on what, what our latest is.
Yeah, that, that is, um, gonna end up being about, about sixty-five percent that, that will have stayed on. We, we made offers to eighty-eight percent of the current staff, but about sixty-five percent will, will stay on, uh, here, local, yeah.
Um, and does that, that includes the, the ER staff as well?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Chris?
Um, thank you for the presentation. So I heard five hundred billion dollar cut to Medicaid, is that right?
Uh, no, it's, uh, the Congressional Budget Office today made a statement or was reported that they're looking at and it, they had the, the need for potentially an additional five hundred billion dollar cut to Medicare.
Medicare?
Yeah, Medicare, not Medicaid. I don't think Medicaid. Medicaid's facing a ten trillion dollar cut, I think, over ten years, is what the number is for, uh, Medicaid.
So, my question is, how can a poor person without insurance access your system?
Uh, it's been our mission for a hundred and fifty years to take all, take care of all, all comers. And so we have, uh, I think, a, a very good policy toward anyone who needs care. We, we don't, uh, exclude anyone for, for lack of insurance, lack of funding. It's, it's been the Sisters. I still report up to six Sisters who are our board, and it's been their mission, uh, since, since they started OSF Health Systems, so that won't change at all.
And act- I mean, honestly, the, the reality of it is, um, you know, we're proud that we do serve, uh, the Medicaid population and, and other vulnerable communities. Three of our hospitals are safety net hospitals, which means over fifty percent of your, um, uh, the patients you serve are on Medicaid. And as JT mentioned, we have a long history of, of serving the, 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 those that are the poorest and vulnerable, and our, most vulnerable in our community. We have charity care, uh, policies and financial assistance, uh, policies in place. So, um, none of that's changing, and, you know, we look forward to serving, uh, the behavioral health population here in Urbana.
Other questions? Yes, Chandra?
It's, it kind of sounds like this is a done deal, like there's no wiggle room in maintaining what's already there. Is that the case?
It, it would, it would be difficult to sustain going forward, just, just given what we've seen from our market share declines over the last seven years. I, I, you know, I, I think that the, the community has, has decided that they don't need us to duplicate services. That's what they're showing us by, by visiting and accessing OSF and our specialty care and primary care. And so this really feels, I'm excited about this. I mean, I think where most communities are closing behavioral health services, Decatur just closed services. All over the state of Illinois, behavioral health is closing. We're expanding. We just got thirteen million dollars to build two more behavioral health floors. We are going to make a very robust service for what is right now a very vulnerable, uh, population of the community. And so I, I think that leaning into this vulnerable patient area, uh, is a huge win for, for the whole county, for the community, for the region. Every one of our hospitals and our ER are currently holding patients that need behavioral health placement. Carl is every system in the state of Illinois. And so this gives us an, an opportunity to really expand those services and create, uh, a niche that I think is much needed.
Well, and, you know, the one thing you just mentioned about holding patients everywhere, uh, right now, it's not uncommon for behavioral health patients because there's a lack of beds, to really be shipped all over the state. And, you know, basically, they'll go to our ED, they'll sit and they'll wait, we'll treat whatever medical need brought them to the ED. They'll sit, we'll wait for a bed, and then at two or three o'clock in the morning or four o'clock in the morning, wherever in the state a bed opens up, we'll try and jump on that bed and take care of it. That means going to Chicago, that means going south, that means going, uh, west, that means going into Indiana. What this is going to allow is people that are, are have, you know, in their, their greatest need, they'll be able to stay local and close to home. Families will be able to be there for their, for their loved ones, and we won't have to send them to Chicago or elsewhere for care. Um, so it's just, it's, it, at the end of the day, um, you know, it, you know, if it's a done deal or not, we, we, we think it's the right way to, to, to sustain healthcare and provide for what we see as a real need in this community.
Sort of a follow-up question with that. I think it was Chris had mentioned adolescent, um, mental health care. And with the governor just signing that latest bill, like why not invest in adolescent mental health care? If you've got thirteen million to build two new floors, why not one of them be for adolescent?
Yeah, it's, it's a great question, and it's, and it's definitely a, a, a vulnerable patient population here, and we, we have been evaluating it. It is, maybe this will be a, a tiered, kind of phased approach to the expansion of behavioral health. I think that it's something we are looking at, how we can better serve as, as a whole system, as a ministry. And so we will have, uh, some adolescent beds as a part of our hundred-bed, um, behavioral health hospital in Peoria. But what can we potentially do in this market? We'll continue to evaluate it for sure.
And we also, um, we, we, we encounter some, um, regulatory, um, limitations by combining both campuses. Um, again, by doing that, we, we're going to be able to bring additional money into Urbana. We'll also be able to stabilize, uh, Danville. But you can only have so many behavioral health beds before you start to trip, um, different regulatory hurdles and you start being classified in a different way. And so what we did is we looked at what the need was, and for right now, the need that really jumped out at us is, as JT pointed out, kind of what we've been experiencing. Doesn't mean that, you know, the, the adolescent need isn't there, it's definitely there. But this is something that we could go into right away. Uh, again, over time, um, as we grow beds in Danville, we will have the ability to possibly grow behavioral health beds here in Urbana um, and, and avoid some of those regulatory hurdles that, that would prevent, um, greater expansion on the behavioral health side.
Thank you. And, um, Chris, if you don't mind, I'll slip in a question and go around for another seconds. I am keeping an eye on the time, but I think we have a light agenda and important issue here. My question is if the behavioral healthcare is impacted by OSF's religious base? Like, to my understanding, there's limited reproductive healthcare at OSF because of religious base of the hospital?
Yeah, I'm not, you know, I'm not-
Correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I didn't know if there was any limitations to your behavioral healthcare.
No, in our, in our religious directives, I'm not aware of any, anything that would, um, create a barrier for, around the behavioral health space.
Yeah, I mean, what I would say is, uh, we operate according to our, um, ethical and religious directives as a, a provider of Catholic healthcare um, now currently in Urbana, and that wouldn't change. And we can't see of any, um, issue, or we're not aware of any issue that would be, that jumps out in, in, in what we're proposing um, based on our existing operations right now in Urbana where we have behavioral health beds.
Thank you. Chris?
What about, uh, interfacing with the criminal justice system? There are- There are numerous inmates waiting for beds in our forensic hospitals, which are nearly nonexistent, and whoever wants to take that, go ahead.
Yeah, we've already, great question, and it's another, I think, an exciting opportunity. We've had a chance to meet with the sheriff. They've, you know, when they, I think when they heard, oh, we were gonna be expanding behavioral health beds, they really wanted to line up and have a conversation. We had a great conversation. We're gonna continue to talk. I think there's a lot of opportunity through early interventions before someone's incarcerated, so, you know, we're gonna have conversations there, what kind of resources, you know, where there's opportunities to collaborate, and then afterwards, you know, things that they might need currently right now in their jail, things that, you know, and how we might be able to collaborate post-incarceration, so that we can go ahead and help, and then also, once patients are, once someone's released and they have behavioral health needs, how to make sure there's some support networks there, so they don't, you know, they're released and all of a sudden now they have no, there's no support, they're not receiving the medicine or treatments, those are opportunities there. So these are all conversations that we've begun to have with the sheriff's office.
And also, the police departments as well, instead of, we had a task force in 2013 that their third recommendation was, we need a behavioral health expansion facility in this community. So I guess what I'm hoping for too, in addition to everything you've just said, is that police departments will be, you'll be in collaboration with officers to take someone there to your facility, instead of the county jail, if this person, yes, may have committed a crime, or may be out of control here, but we don't need to necessarily incarcerate them, maybe we can take them to you and head off a lot of problems that way.
Yeah, just to elaborate on what Chris mentioned, I mean, I think we had a good kind of first session and plans to continue those ongoing talks, you know, how can our therapists potentially be involved in some of those calls? How, you know, can we do it via telehealth platforms? Like, what other options do we have to sort of assist them on that avenue, for sure?
I just want to say that we are exploring, this city here, an alternative response, and certainly, the option to divert people to a behavioral health facility will become very interesting to us, so just flagging that for the future.
Sure, yeah, thank you.
Yes, DeShawn?
Piggyback on what Councilman Evans, where it was, Councilman Evans was just saying, because I know when we spoke, when we met, we, that did come up in regards to the alternative response, so I guess my question would be, what does that look like, right, to come from us to get that started? Is that in, the ball in our court in that sense, or what does that transition look like?
Well, I'll tell you, I think first for us, we've got to get, someone asked if it was a done deal, we've got it, we've got to get through our certificate of need process, so, you know, I think the city actually requested a public hearing on, now I'm gonna blank on that, July 21st, Thursday, so there'll be that hearing, and then after that, in September, there'll be an actual, you know, HFSRB board meeting that'll vote. Once we know what's, you know, the outcome of that, and we're already starting to make some plans, but obviously you can't make final plans until you really know what's going on, once we're there, then we'll start putting the pieces in place, and I think there's just a lot of opportunity for collaboration, and so those kind of conversations would be appropriate, you know, once we're approved and we're going forward, and we can start looking, I mean, that's the exciting thing about this, is, you know, JT and his team is gonna have the ability to basically stand up, you know, behavioral health services here in Urbana, yeah, there's the existing unit, but it's really gonna be kind of from scratch, you know, and that's a really great opportunity.
I would just say, Mayor, I mean, I'm open to all suggestions on that, we've started having some collaborative meetings, we want to be a resource in the community however we can, so whatever, you know, you all think is, as a council, would be helpful there, I'm open to it.
All right. That's good.
Sure.
Do you know off the top of your head, is anyone from OSF currently on our upcoming alternative response task force? Sorry if I, if I, I just looked at the list, but I didn't, no?
I'm not, I'm not certain, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay.
Could you please clarify for us the public hearing date, you said?
Yeah, so there's a public hearing on the 21st.
Of August.
Of August, and then there's a meeting in.
The full certificate of need meeting is September 25th, and the public hearing is here, and on Thursday.
At the city council chambers on August 21st? And do you have the time?
1:00.
1:00? Thank you. And that's time for people to learn more and provide input?
Yeah, well, yeah, one of the things, yeah, so it'll be just like this, where we'll have the opportunity to present kind of what's going on, and it won't really be an answer, there won't be an opportunity for questions to be answered, it'll be more of a presentation, and for the HFSRB to hear from the public.
Thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Clerk?
I will just add as a point of clarification for the public, so that public hearing on August 21st, 2025, at 1:00 PM, will be here in Urbana City Council Chambers, and that is a public hearing, so it is not a meeting of any city body, no city business will occur. The notice provided to us by the Illinois Health Services and Facilities Review Board is available on our website, as is all of this information relating to this meeting, advertised just the same as any regular meeting, so you can find that information on our website currently.
Great, thank you.
Can we just say, I'd also like to say thanks to the mayor for the letter, very much appreciated, so thank you, and thank you for making the time for us to allow us to come here, thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you to you all taking the time to explain a little more about your changes here. Last call? All right, thank you very much. Next, we have public input, if anyone from our audience would like to provide input, please approach the microphone, and you'll have up to five minutes.
My name is Ron Kester, I live at 1209 West Oregon Street here in Urbana, and as you consider the ordinance about surveillance technology and databases, I would like you to consider where we are on the automatic license plate reader issue, as this seems to be the most likely surveillance technology the police will request in the coming years. From the standpoint of civil rights and personal security, I think the ALPR surveillance network is a complete betrayal of the public trust. As some of you might be aware, scandal erupted around ALPRs in June, when the Illinois Secretary of State announced that Illinois had been subject to hundreds of illegal license plate searches by dozens of law enforcement agencies, including one from the Texas Sheriff's Office, searching for a woman who aborted a pregnancy and fled the state. Illinois doesn't allow ALPR data searches for abortion or immigrant-related reasons. The Texas search labeled it a missing persons case. When I read about all these instances of policing agencies around the country violating Illinois law, I wonder, A, how easy it is to misuse the ALPR database known as FLOC, and B, what remedies are being put in place to prevent this from happening again? First, literally nothing prevents a network user from misusing the ALPR data network. After the incident in June, FLOC modified its user dashboard, but it's still the case that the reason for a surge comes from a dropdown menu. Case numbers are optional, and no warrant is required. There is no probable cause standard for these searches. Compare this to the requirements of the Foreign Intelligence Surveillance Act. The FISA court provides judicial oversight for every request by the FBI and NSA, collect data on people suspected of spying. 11 federal court judges hear every petition to surveil a citizen in the US. The FISA court is known for being too pessimistic, or too permissive, but just notice how much lower the bar has been set for ALPR searches. The story gets worse. The only real recourse the Illinois Secretary of State's office has at this time is to create an audit process. Millions of searches take place in a month, so the audits will need to be highly selective, say, one out of every thousand searches, to see if it was legit and comported with Illinois law. For each search, the auditor will contact the police department somewhere, the police department will do an internal search, and provide the auditor with a case file to corroborate the search's legitimacy, and the auditor will then go through the file to see if it's really true. The human labor required to do these audits sounds overwhelming. Okay, so what happens if the auditor catches somebody doing something illegal as they announced in June? Nothing, apparently. I found no evidence anyone is being prosecuted for international, or interstate fraud, for violating Illinois's laws, or anything else. FLOC says they are instituting a policy of filters to limit how the technology can be used, but offer no specifics, nor have I seen any conversation about what to do about bad actors who develop workarounds to undermine policy. It's true that ALPR data can be sequestered from shared use across networks, but this appears to be something of a quid pro quo arrangement, in which to get access to the larger network, you have to agree to expose the data of your local citizens. Based on my research, this process has no transparency, the public does not know how ALPR data is being used or shared. The ALPR surveillance network is toxic authority. ALPRs are collecting on the order of 20 billion license plate reads per month, to determine human movement everywhere, all the time, and the only thing protecting us from wholesale and persistent abuse is the honor system, an impractical system of audits, and that's it. No warrants, no judicial review, and no one is in a position to enforce Illinois law about the misuse of ALPR data. More than resisting the purchase of ALPR surveillance technology, I encourage you to seriously consider passing an ordinance banning ALPRs outright. This stuff is a civil rights nightmare, a porous, abuse-prone database with virtually no security, no Plan B, and no enforceable penalties. Until someone develops a wholesale revision to these standards, we should get used to saying no every time this issue comes up. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the committee, the whole?
Can you hear me? Okay. Hi, my name's Sana Sabualla, I'm a resident of Urbana, I'm also a member of Champaign-Urbana Muslim Action Committee, and I'm here to voice my support for the ordinance that you'll be discussing later today on establishing policy and reporting requirements for policing surveillance. CM Muslim Action Committee has already come out with a statement, I think in December, supporting the statement, and I just wanted to reiterate that support today. As my neighbor Ron mentioned, that, you know, ALPRs have been a huge issue in this community, it's, more and more we're seeing surveillance being used in ways that violate principles that hold true in Urbana, especially Urbana as a sanctuary city. And I think this surveillance ordinance is a way to protect citizens against these kind of abuses of power that we're seeing happening all over the country. I really appreciate that we have city council members who've thought of this and wanted to bring it forward. I think as city council members, what you can do is create policy, and I appreciate you using your power to protect us, and I just wanted to say that, you know, I really support this ordinance, I appreciate you taking the time to discuss it and put it forward, and CM Muslim Action Committee also is in support of this ordinance, we appreciate all the protections that we can get from the city, so thank you.
Good evening, I'm Brian Dolan, I live at 303 West Locust in Urbana, I'm also here to speak in support of the surveillance ordinance. I wanted to bring up two cases. There's a perception that this, police issues, brutality, these things happen elsewhere, but I just want to remind us that this happens in our own community. One is the case of Jerry Sandage, a University of Illinois police officer, who over five years ago was using, this is not something in the future, this is something that's already happened, using police databases to stalk seven women and two men, and to call it stalking is actually a bit of a euphemism. So this has happened, Sandage continues to elude justice after over five years, and he was just recently in the newspapers. So this shows that even with current databases, the police cannot be fully trusted, and when the police abuse these databases, they cannot be fully prosecuted and brought to justice. The other case, more locally, is the Urbana police officer John Frankelmont, who nearly five years ago was involved in brutalizing local residences, slamming, putting individuals in the back of a squad car and slamming doors on their legs. It's been five years, and we still don't know the fate of John Frankelmont. So these couple cases, again, show how difficult it is to bring police oversight, when we have these things, with the given laws that we already have on the books. Thanks so much for your attention.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience wish to address the committee? Seeing none, we have a few emails to read, I have three that were requested to be read out loud, but if anyone else has an ear and wants to give a double check if there were any additional ones that are asked to be read aloud, please let me know. We got a timer, thank you. First email, "Dear Mayor Williams and Councilmembers Wu, Evans, Hershey, Colsetti, Bishop Wilcom, Quisenberry, I am Lila Leopold, Ward 4, writing in request, writing to request reading of the following aloud if time permits, and if I'm not, if I'm too late to get this to you. I have been slowly crafting a statement that I can't currently find due to computer trouble, the irony of having this issue while writing, and about a surveillance tech ordinance is not lost on me, so I'm sending the below. I'm continuing to write in support of the police ordinance technology oversight ordinance, currently under consideration by Urbana City Council. I thank all council members for their continued discussion and serious consideration of this ordinance, and hope it remains up for discussion in subsequent meetings. I hope council members and our local police leaders can see this ordinance as an urgently needed safety component for working with tools that we neither design nor fully control, and that rather as, rather as a supposed hindrance to police work, an ordinance such as this one can be seen as an integral component of keeping our community safe. Support this ordinance, support of this ordinance is in itself not a criticism of police work, this ordinance is merely a necessary component of working with the technology infrastructures of today. This ordinance can also play a crucial role in maintaining open and honest communication in our community. We cannot say that, we cannot say with certainty where data from new and existing tools used locally will go, or how this may inadvertently and irreparably harm the safety of any member of our community despite their intended use. Therefore, it seems especially necessary that police and the community as a whole remain in conversation about the latest tools and their uses. This way, we all can remain best informed about how to keep each other safe and how to continue operating as a sanctuary city, which protects the full constitutional rights of its constituents. This ordinance is a necessary and forward-thinking component of 21st century governance. Thank you, Lila Leopold." Next, we have one requested to be entered into the record from Carol Spindell, ACLU, "Dear City Councilmembers and Mayor Williams, the ACLU of Champaign County, which represents over 1,800-member households, supports passage of the surveillance ordinance, ordinance number 2024-12-042, an ordinance establishing approval policy and reporting requirements for policing surveillance technology and databases before the city council. There seems to be some confusion and hyperbole about the goal of this ordinance and its effect on the department. No one wants to micromanage the police, nor do we want to block the department from acquiring useful new technology. However, Urbana residents have made it clear that they do want their police department to be accountable to their community, and we do want some control over how our personal data is used, stored, and marketed. We have only one mechanism to achieve these goals, our elected representatives, you. Under the terms of this ordinance, if the police department wants to acquire new surveillance technology, they come to the council and explain what the technology does, why it is important to acquire it, and most importantly, to the Urbana residents we have spoken with, what the company leasing the technology to the police department can and cannot do with the personal data they collect. Requiring this transparency reassures everyone that their voice matters. We don't know what technology will be invented and marketed to law enforcement in the future. It's clear that Urbana residents want reasonable guardrails placed around their data to protect it and to specify how law enforcement can use it. They want to protect their personal information from private companies that may want to provide, might want to profit from its sale. With the, with this ordinance in place, we will be able to find out about about new surveillance technologies before their acquisition and to have a say in whether we approve this kind of surveillance in our community. We will be able to understand what protections the tech company organized to maximize profit provides to assure us that our data, if not involved in any criminal investigation, will be sufficiently protected from misuse. We deeply appreciate your service to our wonderful town and the attention you have devoted to this issue. ACLU urges you to pass the ordinance. Carol Spindell, Director of Communications, ACLU of Champaign County. And last one I have printed to read is, Dear Mayor and City Council, I'm contacting you to urge you to support Ordinance Number 2024-12-042, an ordinance establishing approval policy and reporting requirements for policing surveillance technology and databases. It is your duty as elected officials to be good stewards of public finances and to be good stewards of the public trust. The last thing that the citizens of Urbana-Champaign want is to live with an Orwellian nightmare where Big Brother is always watching you. As elected members of our community, you bear the responsibility of ensuring that the Urbana Police Department does not purchase surveillance equipment that violates Residence Fourth and Fourteenth Amendments. This resolution is crucial at this time of rapid growth in AI and surveillance technology. The city council should be constantly asking questions about what types of technology is being used to surveil the citizens and visitors of the city. Please support Ordinance Number 2024-12-042, an ordinance establishing approval policy and reporting requirements for policing surveillance technology and databases. I'm happy to talk with any of you individually related to my experiences with camera systems and the importance of oversight and reporting. Sincerely, Dawn. Were there others that I missed that were asked to be read aloud? And any last call from the live audience before closing public input? All right, seeing none, that concludes that. Next item is staff report. Are there any staff reports for tonight? Seeing none. Our first item of new business is Ordinance Number 2025-08-024, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number One Omnibus.
Good evening. So, so before you tonight is the first budget amendment of the fiscal year '26. And, and this is something we do throughout the year. Whenever we have, like, whenever we have an update on expenses or revenues or project timing. And we do this throughout the year occasionally. And just a refresher that this budget amendment requires six affirmative votes, including the mayor, in order to pass. So, for this budget amendment, in summary, we, a lot of these are just housekeeping items. We have some grants, a minor correction, and some updates, some transfer to, for equipment repair. And I'm going to go over this fund by fund so that we can keep track on this. So, the first one is the, is the Hotel Royale incentive in the fund loan. Council approved this ordinance in, on June 2nd, 2025 to, for, in order for the Central Tep Fund to borrow, borrow the money from the general fund until we issue bonds for the development incentive. And so, this amendment will recognize about, in, about eight months of interest income. And that will be paid to the general fund. The amount is about $1,033,000, $1,033,000, $1,500. And that will be from the Central Tep Fund. And then the next item will be police training. And we will add about $33,000 of reimbursable training funds for patrol officers. And these training costs will be fully reimbursed by the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board. And then we also accepted a couple grants. The first one is the $16,000 from the Justice Assistant Grant, and that's for the police department. And also $8,400 from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. And this is for the historic preservation website. And then we also have some rebudgets. And the first one is for Public Works, and that's for the tree donation funds. And then in community development, we will rebudget $50,000 for the housing study. And then some, about $20,000 in software implementation cost for the Ovengov, I'm sorry, for the Citizen Serve License. And then we will also rebudget all the unspent social services funds, which is about $434,000. And, and then this amendment will also fix a minor error in, in the community development budget and for the technology services line. And this will be about $4,500. And then in the capital improvement and replacement fund, we will move the Public Works Facility Improvement Project to a new project so that we can track the project better. And then that will also help with financial reporting. And then in the VERF, we will rebudget the special operation equipment for the fire department. That was originally planned in fiscal year '25, but now it will be purchased in fiscal year '26. And then for the American Rescue Plan Fund, we, we will have two, two program, we will, two programs that, in there that would not put in the budget, but that, I believe that was for RPC and HSI. And then in the desk service fund, we updated the budgeted principal and interest payments for, for the fire station bonds to match the, to match the amount that was listed under desk service schedule. And then last one is the Equipment Services Fund. So, we needed an additional $5,500 to cover the cost for the fire truck engine replacement. And the current fleet budget is not, does not have enough money to cover this expense. So, this, this extra money will be transferred from the general fund to support this one-time repair. So, the estimated unassigned ending fund balance for the general fund will, is, after this amendment, will be about $12 million. And this represent about 25.16% of recurring expenditures. And this is above the policy requirement by $78,000, $78,000, which is a small amount. And that will limit the city's ability to absorb any new recurring expenditures or any expenditures. Also, this amount excludes the $5.473 million that we reserve for at-risk federal grant programs and funds set aside for the second and third years of the Community Engagement Team pilot program. And, and staff recommends moving, approving this ordinance and to move, for approval, to move this to the next city council meeting. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Do we have questions? Yes, Mary Alice?
I have a question, but I don't know if you would have the answer. So, the housing study, is that going to go out for RFP? Or is that, is that something that's going to come to city council?
I believe it, it should come to city council. There, there have been some discussions with the RPC about conducting the housing study for the city. I believe we did issue an RFP some time ago.
Okay, but we would approve it. This is just moving the money so that we had the money budgeted last year, and it's in this budget.
Correct. Just make sure the money is in the current fiscal year so that, so that we can follow through on this.
Okay, thank you.
Chandra, did you have?
I was following along, and under Equipment Services Fund, you mentioned it was $5,500, but it says, rounding up, $54,000, was it?
Yeah, $55,000.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Questions? Yes, Jay?
Yeah, I'm not sure who to direct this question to, but is there a plan to get us back in line with our fiscal policies? I have a very difficult time moving forward with approving a budget that does not align with our policies. See Elizabeth's hand.
So, this is in line with our fiscal policies, or we wouldn't be recommending it. What Dawn was pointing out is that the margin, the difference between the 25% required fund balance is small. It's like $78,000. So, this is much less flexibility than we've had in most recent fiscal years for things that come up during the year. But it is compliant with our policies.
It says this exceeds the policy requirement by $78,208.
Sorry, correct, meaning the fund balance is more than required by $78,000.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. The wording was confusing in this. It's concerning that it's that close, but it's good to know we have not exceeded our policies. Thank you.
And could we clarify on that? Because I agree with some of the confusion of exceeding our policy. It is just 25.0% of recurring expenditures is our policy minimum. Is that correct?
Correct. The policy requires 25%, and we're just slightly over that.
And I guess maybe following up on that question that if anybody happens to remember offhand, or could maybe remind us at the next council meeting, the procedure for, if or when we do surpass that? I believe that we had to have like a plan on file or kind of what that process is.
Correct. We can, that's addressed in the financial policies that are approved by council. And we can send that by, by email just as a refresher. But basically, if we dip into that 25% reserve, then I'm required to recommend to you a specific plan to recover our fund balance. And there's a specific time period outlined there as well.
Thank you. Other questions? Or any interest in a motion? Yes, Chandra?
Yes, I'll recommend approval of Ordinance Number 2025-08-024, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number One Omnibus, onto city council for approval.
I'll second.
Thank you. Moved by Chandra, seconded by Mary Alice, onto city council regular agenda for approval. Any discussion?
Yes, Jay? I'll just reiterate that it is concerning to me. I do appreciate the clarification, but it's concerning to me that we are cutting things so close. And I think that's something that we need to keep in mind for, for future budgets as well, that it's, it's cutting it really close.
Quick comment, anybody? Take chair, Jay?
I'm willing to take the chair. Chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. Yeah, want to echo some concerns about the, the very thin margin on this budget and that we're just over a month in. And with this first budget amendment, we're already at very little remaining available funds for the year. So, remind us to just have some caution in there. And also would like to have a reminder about having a conversation about vehicle replacement and policies throughout the city, but particularly with emergency response, with the fire truck being one here. I know that we need to have some more detailed, in-depth conversations about what alternative vehicles could be used by fire. What's the replacement rotation for police and other departments? And then especially looking down the road, that if we're looking to create an entire new program potentially, like the alternative response, that would need their own vehicles and equipment, that we, I would like to have a much more in-depth, detailed conversation about city vehicles, citywide, before, ideally, before we get to putting together next year's budget, so it's not coming out of nowhere. I think that's all I had for now. Thank you.
Would you like the chair back?
Yes, please.
I will relinquish the chair.
Thank you. Any last call for discussion, James?
Yeah, Dawn, or if someone could remind me, what was the, what was our difference before this budget amendment?
I don't have the numbers with me, but I think before this, we, the numbers were actually closer than this number.
So, this number is actually larger than?
Larger than before.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I seem to remember, but thank you.
Any other discussion questions? Motion on the floor is to move this to city council regular agenda for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Okay, that moves on to council. Thank you very much for the presentation. And our next item of business is unfinished business, Ordinance Number 2024-12-042, an ordinance establishing approval policy and reporting requirements for policing surveillance technology and databases. I do have a thing to start us out with here. It might be simplest to pass the chair for part of this discussion. So, if Jay, you mind taking again?
I can take the chair back.
Thank you. And you got me for?
And I'll recognize Grace.
Thank you.
So, just a little bit of updates here for where we stand. In the packet is the previous memo and most recent version of the ordinance on the table that's been the same for quite a few months. I'd say about four months or so, we've been on this version six that hasn't had any changes since then. Was hoping to meet with other city staff since the last time we talked about this at Cal. There were some scheduling issues, and so we were able to meet, but not until this past Friday afternoon. So, we did not have very much progress outside of the meetings as far as the ordinance itself goes. What I see as missing pieces of information here, and I'm down to go with how the discussion goes, if we want the will of the council to recap what's on the table, if we want to look at any other changes down the road. Our city attorney did look at Oak Park ordinance a little more closely, and I think we could compare some of those. I can be happy to get into detail. I have a few documents up on the screen if we want to get into that level of detail tonight. But overall, what I would recommend as the direction, if it's the will of the majority of council, is that we do keep this in Cal, which I know there's, there's a will to move it along. It has been over nine months that this has been in committee of the whole. But I think that there are two key pieces missing here still. And one is information about the current technology or databases used in the city that fall under these definitions. And we have not yet had that information. I think that, that, that there is still the plan to gather that information. But I think especially when it comes down to narrowing down the definitions and what this applies for, or whether it applies to just police or all city departments, I think that that is a really crucial piece of information to know what is currently or potentially being used.
I'm really distracted by the audience talking. Could we?
Point of order, if folks are having conversations, if you could take it outside of council chambers, we would appreciate it so we can make sure that everyone can hear the speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I think that's our, our one big piece that we still need, that I would ask us to request that we keep it in committee of the whole is my suggestion. But with maybe some checkpoints along the way, you know, next Cal, we have a discussion and be sure that there's some kind of accountability dates that we have some updates here so this doesn't keep getting pushed down the road. And then another recommendation was that this gets formatted as a city code rather than an ordinance. And happy if Matt wants to jump in later on the discussion from our city attorney. But my understanding is that it comes out to be somewhat logistically the same kind of end result in that ordinances are supposed to be incorporated into the city code eventually. So, I think that that would, that was another suggestion that I think would make sense is just have it go directly into city code. And I have some notes on some of those differences. Logistically, not too much of a difference. There would be no preamble or whereas clause would be one of the major differences with an ordinance. But it seems like you still have the same basic definitions and policies in there. If we were to keep this in Cal, I would also request that If we were to keep this in Cal, I would also request that we wait until the sponsors of this ordinance are back. I will be gone the first week of September and I believe that Jaya's cosponsor will be gone some of the later parts of September. So I would recommend that we have either discussion or presentation the next few Cal meetings on the second and the 15th before going, coming back as a voting item when we have the sponsors of the ordinance present. So I have more I can say, but I'll stop for now. Thank you.
Would you like the chair back? Okay. Anyone else have? James?
Yeah, I'm looking forward to hearing how the review of the Oak Park. I think it's actually part of their city code at this point. They went straight in. One of the reasons why we kind of struggled with a couple of the definitions and the inclusions and exclusions. And I have to say that I read through all the inclusions and exclusions in the Oak Park ordinance and didn't have the same concerns. We could look at them side by side and, and say why they, they are pretty clear on the distinction between surveillance technology and databases, which is something I know we've had a couple of conversations on. And if, if they're, I, I think I would vote for the Oak Park version and the language they use tonight, if, if that's what we're doing. So I think we've, I think we've gotten pretty close. And if some, we could make progress on a couple of the things that have been sticking us. I, you know, I, I, I think we're, I think we're pretty close. So, and I am, I'm totally comfortable with a schedule that makes sure the people who want to be here are here for the, the voting and the approval. It's always, always been my interest and concern to have people that have, feel strongly about particular items are present when we make decisions about them.
Mary Alice?
Yeah, so just because I wanted to see what the difference is, I actually asked the clerk to print out the ordinance for Oak Park and what we have today. So we all have physical copies. So I was going to pass these down so that people have paper copies of them as they look at it. You know, I, I feel like, I've said this before, but I just want to say it again, which is Grace has spent a lot of time and effort pulling this all together. And I feel like it's kind of grown and grown and grown. And so I'd, I'd like to kind of maybe start at a smaller base. And I feel like the Oak Park one does that, does a good job of really focusing in on some of the key things that we've been hearing from the community. This has gone through not only, you know, Illinois law and so forth, but also I'm sure had a lot of input from their community in the ACLU and so forth. So I guess what I would say is, is that I would be comfortable as well of retooling the Oak Park one. And then there's some additional things in Grace's suggestions in terms of different boards and the creation of a different board and so forth. And I, I feel like we should disentangle a little bit of that because it's, it's just kind of, there's one more thing that we need to talk about. It feels that we don't make progress, right? And so I'm thinking if we think of this in stages, then maybe we can start moving the needle closer towards it. So that's, that's my thought.
Any other comments, discussion?
I was just going to say, I think from our conversation Friday, that was kind of the, the census that we came to was, you know, taking a good majority of the verbiage from the Oak Park, you know, ordinance in itself to move forward. I mean, there were some small, minor changes, you know, I guess that we would have wanted to put in place. So I agree and think that we are very close as Corson Berry mentioned as well, so.
Grace? Thank you. Also just want to be sure that we're aware here that, you know, whatever we decide is going to be by a majority vote of council here in the official process. And that what is on the agenda, what is proposed is the, the ordinance that has, as I appreciate people remembering, has had a lot of research, has had ACLU review, has had multiple attorneys and community members review it and things that we've been discussing for the past nine months. I think that we can gain a lot from the Oak Park ordinance and looking at it, but I do think we need to look at them very carefully side by side. So I appreciate that you have that. I haven't had as much of a chance to do that with a fine tooth comb over this weekend. What I have seen is there are some differences and I think that we would be, I think the expression is throwing the baby out with the bathwater if we just scrap everything that we've been talking about and say we're going to go with copy and paste Oak Parks version. There are some language that reflects our values, like Oak Parks has the words input from citizens. And I think that we've had conversations about residents or just stakeholders or public input. So there are things in our version that are Urbana things and there's Oak Parks things that I think don't align with our Urbana values as much. There are some logistical differences. For example, the Oak Park has a requirement for public input to have a public input hearing period of only 30 days as opposed to 45 days for what's proposed in our version. And that public input is required prior to a hearing and submitted in writing to the clerk is the Oak Parks version versus ours just says that public has 45 days to submit comments to city council, which I think leaves it much more accessible. So I think before especially we make any suggestions that we're going to throw out what we have for someone else's work, I think we really need to consider it carefully. Their timing is a 30-day notice for public and for council before approval. Ours was as written, 60 days for council review and 45-day public input period. I think that there are some things that we can gain and incorporate from Oak Parks, but I do think that when they differ, we need to very seriously consider what we're throwing out of our own. And like, for example, Oak Parks just says approval. And we already had this discussion and it was put in the language, majority vote approval by council. Like we've already gone through a lot of these steps in tailoring it for Urbana that is, I think, more accessible for the public, is a more well-defined process than Oak Parks. So I think that we really need to carefully consider how or if we merge or change those two. One thing that I think would be helpful to incorporate from Oak Parks is on page seven of eight of their actual document, which I think maybe page numbers are different here. It's their section 2-224, incorporation of state law, semicolon, conflict. I think that this section is helpful, just says that there are these certain state and federal laws and if there's a conflict, defer to the higher ranking governmental body. I think we already have this partially incorporated in our ordinance throughout various sections, but it might be nice and maybe city attorney weigh in. It might be nice to just specifically spell that out in a section. So I think that's one thing that we could gain from the Oak Parks ordinance. But I think that in a lot of the discrepancies, I personally think ours is more thorough, more accessible, already been discussed on our Urbana values and process. And then one other point I'd like to add is about the oversight. The Oak Parks ordinance has an oversight section, but they just talk about extensions on reports. I'm not really sure how that has anything to do with oversight. It seems just more of like the timing and we already have such a mechanism built in with requested extensions for reports, exigent circumstances. We already have that built in in other places. What we, what's in there as some options to consider is actual oversight from outside or commission body. As we talked about on Friday and would love to hear more council thought is having the reports and use policy as defined in this ordinance have a review by the CPRB, this police, civilian police review board, just like other commissions and reports. This is very common that the annual climate report goes through the Sustainability Advisory Commission before it gets here. And a lot of reports and items that we see have gone through a commission before they get to us. And I think that that is something that is quite reasonable and I don't envision, but would, we can, happy to look into. I don't think that would require rewriting the CPRB ordinance. It's not changing anything major in that area. So I think that that is something that we could do that would be a pretty small lift of just saying that the annual report and the use policy or the use reports go through the CPRB during that time period before coming to council because we already have a 60-day kind of notice period built in there. And I think that's all for now, but again, I just, I think we need a little more time. If, I think that there's some good things to learn in the Oak Parks ordinance, but I don't recommend that we just throw out what we've worked with for it.
Go Mary Alice and then James this time round.
So just so I'm reading this correctly, Grace, you have a, a new Section Eight Community Advisory Committee on Surveillance, which is a generation of a new committee? Am I, in your ordinance? Is that, am I reading that correctly? That that's a, that's a new commission that you're asking to be established?
No.
Okay.
So there's on the version in the packet, there's a Section Eight, the Annual Surveillance Technology Oversight Report for Oversight, that were just some ideas, some recommendations. So that first kind of Section Eight is what I would be recommending gets changed to reports and policy, get approved through CPRB and then come to council. Would all that, Section B. And then the second Section Eight there, which is confusing, is from ACLU Model Bill. So that's just kind of an informational piece.
What you're trying to incorporate? Yeah, I couldn't figure out.
Yeah, I'm sorry. On the electronic version, I think it's in purple. So it's maybe like a more clearly different color, that that is just an informational piece that is taken directly from the ACLU Model Bill, but is not, it is differentiated in purple, which is hard to see on the printout.
James?
Yeah, I'll, I'll apologize for not being more clear earlier. The things that I liked about the Oak Parks were about its definitions, its inclusions and exclusions. I totally agree, Grace, that some of the language that is in the Oak Parks bill is, is not aligned with what we would want. In fact, there's a line that I would strike out of it that talks about, basically makes it not apply if Oak Parks police are working as part of a federal task force. I think that has to go right out. So I, I, I want to clarify what I said earlier, which was if our definitions, our inclusion and exclusions read like these, I would be comfortable with moving forward to it. But I totally agree that there are parts of the language that have to be adjusted because well, one simplest thing is it's for a village and not for a city. So I mean, from that standpoint, it has to be reviewed from a language standpoint. And I'm definitely not concerned about fixing any part of the language that doesn't match what we've come to based on our discussion here in Urbana. I'm just trying to get around some of the definitions and the details that seem to get, be sticking points before. I just think they laid them out in language that was more comfortable for me.
Grace?
Thank you. Yeah, appreciate the discussion tonight. And I, I do agree that I think that in my mind, the, the definitions are still something to finalize even more thoroughly. And again, I think that we need that information piece. And again, not that we can decide what is or was, is not allowed at this point, but just so that we can decide, one, officially, does this apply to just police department or all city departments? And then two, what types of things in those definitions? And I think we've talked a lot in abstracts and what ifs. And I think we can have a much more clear conversation when we have concrete examples of what we are using or might want to use and how that potentially is used, what it does. So I think that I agree, the definitions are definitely something to refine still. And I look forward to the piece of information that we need so we can do that.
Any other discussion? Mary Alice?
Sorry. I'm just trying to think about like next steps, right? So number one, probably coming back to committee in October to, so that, I mean, if I'm understanding that correctly in terms of people's timeline. Getting feedback, continued feedback from staff on city staff. Perhaps getting a list of different types of items that staff think would fall under the definitions and potentially incorporating segments of the Oak Parks resolution, ordinance rather, in, into this ordinance. So like the three, I'm just trying to think of like, what are our steps that we're going to be taking from now if we do keep this in committee? Is that, that kind of the general?
One point of clarification is perhaps coming back for a vote in October, but continuing to keep this as a discussion item for the committee of the whole going forward. So not find any kind of voting action, but so that we don't lose track of that update with the hope that two weeks from now, city staff might be able to provide us with some of those updates. We'd be able to then use that information for the next meeting. And then by a few rounds, we'd be in a place to be able to vote on it.
Okay, so it's going to continue on the committee of the whole agenda. It's just not going to be put forward for a final vote until October at the earliest.
I think that's the, the hope because of the timing of when Grace and then myself are unavailable.
Grace?
I don't know if I'd more say, but I was going to take the chair back if you had anything to say to.
I will relinquish the chair and yes, I, I had, had some thoughts as well.
Jaya, go ahead.
So yeah, I, I think a lot of what I was feeling has already been said of, I appreciate a lot about, you know, this example that we're looking at from Oak Parks, but I do think that it's important that we keep the pieces that they don't have. So I think if there's specific feedback on, you know, if, if there are portions other than definitions that people are drawn to, being able to make sure that at the very least Grace and probably Matt get that information, I'm seeing a head nod over there, because I know they've both been doing a lot of work and had a lot of meetings over these nine months to try to keep things moving. But I also want to say like it, it is interesting timing that we're coming back to this. Oak Parks just got rid of their contract with Flock, right? So the need to have these conversations, we've been saying there's urgency for nine months. We have to get this done. Like there's just no question, we can't keep kicking. I, I appreciate the ability to be here and be part of the conversation. This is something that's truly, truly important. But I, I think that our residents deserve a definite answer by early October at the very latest because there are multiple incidents of people outside of our state accessing ALPRs. One of our state representatives is leading an investigation at the federal level against Flock. You know, we're very focused on Flock and ALPRs in some ways because that's the, I think in some ways, most pressing issue because it is a technology that gets talked about a lot. But it is unquestionably being used to track folks who are trying to access reproductive health care who are undocumented. And it has, has been stated, there is existing technology that in our community has been misused. So making sure that we are clear about what can be used, when and what kind of oversight is available, especially as we see increased presence of ICE, increased incidence of, in our community, right? This is not abstract. This is here locally that people are being disappeared off our streets, right? Like we can't keep kicking this down the road. We have to do whatever we can to keep our residents safe. And I know I'm a stickler of this, maybe this is just having a parent who wasn't a citizen the majority of my life. It can't just be for citizens, this is for all of our residents. So again, that language piece does need to be Urbana language, not just Oak Parks.
Chris?
To piggyback on the urgency of the hour, I want to remind council that the Real Time Crime Center has opened up on U of I campus that will coordinate, collect and make available to all the police departments all the data that is getting collected by all the police departments. So the direction of police work is going toward greater surveillance and more digital tracking and more digital record keeping. So us getting our act together in terms of what we will be, have for a process is going to be critical because of that Real Time Crime Center. Thank you.
Oops, any other discussion from council, executive, others? Matt?
I'll just note as a procedural point, and this may go without saying, but Grace touched on this in her comments as well, that if and when council decides to replace portions of the current draft ordinance that's on the floor with some other iteration, we would need to essentially do it within the, the vehicle of the existing ordinance, sort of a delete and replace kind of direction. And so we'd need to do that in specific chunks or, or sections, however, however that comes about, in order to avoid the procedural hurdle of like having a new ordinance introduced and that whole process. So we would do it within the shell of the current item on the floor and replace it council's direction, so.
Thank you. Yes, Jaya?
Just to piggyback on that, again, recognizing this wouldn't be for any like vote-based action, does bringing this back next committee of the whole give staff enough time? So I'm looking at Matt and you there is to think about because we do need that feedback, especially from the police department, from other departments as well of what might this impact? And I know again, like you and the mayor are coming into this newer, but this is something that has been asked for for nine months. So I also want to see like, is two weeks feasible time period to at least get that process started? And then Matt, in terms of incorporating some of the language that is more in line with ordinances and also the pieces that I think have kind of already been flagged within the definitions that might be relevant? Does that feel feasible?
Yeah, it does.
Yes, Mary Alice?
I can make a motion.
Sure.
Okay. I will move ordinance number 2024-12-042, an ordinance establishing approval policy and reporting requirements for policing, surveillance, technology, and databases to be on the next committee of the whole meeting in two weeks, or to keep it in committee, which would you like me to do, Darcy?
So that depends on what you would like to do. So if you would like to have a discussion item at the next committee of the whole where we can continue the discussion but not vote on the actual item, you don't want this to come back at the next committee of the whole. You want this to be kept in committee and you are directing staff to prepare a discussion item.
Okay.
Because this is...
Let's keep it in committee.
Because this is not coming back until October, correct, for action?
For action, for final action.
Correct. So this will be kept in committee of the whole until October.
Unless we meet on the fifth Monday of the month would be the exception from my perspective because I know there was a question already about if it needed, would be, I was at least asked if needed, would I be back in time for that if we have a fifth Monday meeting?
Okay, then I would advise council member Wu that you, your motion basically states that this be kept in committee of the whole to appear no sooner on an agenda than September 29th. Is that the fifth Monday in September? I believe so. Because I think the 22nd is the fourth Monday.
29th. All right. That's what I moved, what Darcy said. So to be kept in the committee of the whole and to appear on the next committee of the whole agenda no sooner than September 29th.
I'll second that, but then I have a question.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by James, to keep in Cal, reappearing no sooner than September 29th, 28th, whatever we just said. And yes, James, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it sounds like we're expecting more information in the meantime. I assume those can come from staff reports, right?
Yeah.
So we can learn more about this as this time goes forward, but we're not going to have a discussion earlier than the fifth Monday of September. Is that right?
What the recommendation was, and so right now currently on the floor, is just keep this in Cal until the end of September or October. What the recommendation is, from myself and I believe Jaya as well, is that this can be a discussion item the next two Cows. So if this were a discussion, September 2nd and September 15th, then that could just be a good two-week checkpoint to get updates from staff. If there are any other questions, concerns, but just to keep the conversation going, but no action items, binding decisions made during that time. So on the floor currently, we have keeping in Cal. As far as adding a discussion, that does take just one council member. So can we just do that now? Not seeing any objections?
We can, we can also work with the mayor's office. The mayor can just direct the clerk to put it on the agenda, especially since some of the updates are coming from staff. So I will, I will work with you guys on that one. But yes, it will be on both of those agendas.
Okay, thank you. Because I'd request a discussion on September 2nd and September 15th Cal. And again, on the table now, the motion is to keep in Cal, reappearing no sooner than the end of September, possibly October. Any other discussion? Okay. Do a voice vote for keeping this in Cal. All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, please with nay? Okay, and that passes. Thank you all very much. The next item of business, council input and communication. Yes, Jaya?
Yeah, I just want to thank the public for staying engaged in this process with the technology ordinance. It's a very long time for a really important topic to keep getting pushed down the road. And, you know, it is important that we have a full picture as we do this, but I know we've seen dwindling numbers of people coming out every time we discuss this. And I think it's because we keep pushing it off. So I appreciate the public continuing to engage in this. I appreciate the opportunity to, I think we're getting some momentum behind it and I look forward to getting this done.
Any others? Yes, James?
I would just like to note that this is the beginning of opening week, welcome week for a new class of University of Illinois students showing up. So I ask everyone to enjoy the energy and have some patience as they move in. I think about 24% of the residence halls are already moved in as of today. So it'll be busy tomorrow and on Thursday, so be careful out there.
Thank you. Any others? Last call? Okay, with no further business, we are adjourned. Thank you.